I want to call this meeting of the Hanover County Board of Education Order. I'd ask if everyone would please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and poster colors.
This says no.
And the National Anthem. Let us pray. Gracious God, Creator of all things, we come before thee tonight asking for your blessings and guidance. Be with each one here and we pray that all we do will work to serve the interests of students of the Hanover County. Bless our teachers, staff, administration, and members of this board and guide us in our deliberations and discussions. We pray for the leaders of this country, this county, and the state and pray that they will be mindful of their importance in students' education. We also pray for those who serve to keep our city, county, state, and country safe. We pray for the safety of those who serve in the military, at home, and abroad. Be with their families as they serve. We pray for all branches of law enforcement and for those who serve with our fire departments. Protect them, we ask. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in setting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You would introduce them?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Krista Fason. I'm the music teacher at Snipes Academy.
I am Asia. I'm in the 4th grade.
My name is Michaela. I'm in the 3rd grade.
My name is Brianna and I'm in the 3rd grade.
My name is Ayana and I am in the 4th grade.
My name is Inai and I'm in the 5th grade.
My name is Lyra. I'm in the 4th grade.
And our singers were from Snipes Academy. We want to thank you. You were beautiful.
Yes.
Honor guard is Troop 239 from Mortal Grove Church. If you would introduce yourself.
My name is John. I'm in the 10th grade.
My name is Alex and I'm in the 9th grade.
My name is Darren and I'm in 11th grade.
Thank you.
Did we introduce the music teacher? Did we introduce the music teacher? We didn't give her her name. It should be on there.
Ms. Adams, if you would call the roll please.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Lisa E. Stett. Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Bruce T. Shell.
Here.
David L. Wharton.
Here.
Do you have before you the agenda? Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda as presented?
None for me.
I mean, did we adopt the agenda as presented?
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say in five saying aye.
Aye.
It is adopted. Next item, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of July 11, 2017, and a special meeting on July the 11, 2017. Do I hear a motion that we adopt those minutes?
So move. Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say in five saying aye.
Aye.
They are adopted. Recognition of Achievement, Community Partnership, Readers Are Leaders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. As an ongoing initiative of our board, we want to highlight and communicate our community partnerships in our schools. And tonight, we will hear from a new program called Readers Are Leaders. The Readers Are Leaders founder, Mr. Wendell Byrd, will present the Reading Incentive Program, and it's a pilot project between Readers Are Leaders, New Hanover High School, and Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. Also, the principals are here tonight, Dr. Morgan from New Hanover, and Ms. Rachel Manning, Snipes principal, to attest to the community partnership and answer any questions that the board may have about how this program will operate in their schools. So if you would be so kind to please join me as I welcome Mr. Wendell Byrd, Dr. Morgan, and Ms. Manning.
I actually did not travel from Virginia because I am now a resident of Wilmington, North Carolina.
All right.
So, this is my pleasure to have an opportunity to speak to you. And it really generated from a meeting of David Wharton, right there, through my son and through some other things, and to have an opportunity to launch this program. Just to give you a little history about myself, I actually taught for Fairfax County Public Schools for 31 years as a 2nd grade teacher. And I was a head basketball coach at South Lakes High School, which is in Reston, Virginia, for 23 years. I know that there's a lot of NC State fans and UNC fans. I sent a good player down here. He didn't go to either of those schools. Grant Hill, who played for Duke, played against those schools. So, I'm sorry that he didn't go to...I know this is not Duke country, but I just wanted to share that with you as well. Readers Are Leaders, I guess I can turn this way so I can see. Readers Are Leaders really originated in 2002. Like, I started with 45 of my student athletes going over to an elementary school that was near to us. And now it's blossomed to having 1,600 students affiliated with the program. We have over 30 high schools and elementary schools affiliated with the program. As you see with this slide right here, if you could go back, go up one, I'm sorry. You can see that all...keep going. Just go where...keep going. I'm sorry. One more. And right there, right there. And I'm preaching to the choir when I actually say this, but of all 4th graders in the United States, there are a lot of 4th graders that have difficulty reading. Next slide. Over a third of those are able to read proficiently. And reading is dear to my heart, being a 2nd grade teacher for so many years. So, I started Readers Are Leaders to help support those struggling readers to become more proficient readers and introduce them to student athletes that would encourage them to be the best that they possibly could. And our mission is, our mission is to provide elementary school students with needed reading strategies and learning opportunities necessary to succeed and to provide high school students with the opportunities to understand and help meet those needs in order to promote their development as a role model within their communities. We want those student athletes to learn how to be stronger role models in their communities. Well, Readers Are Leaders, we're going to start here. This is our pilot program in North Carolina, and we hope to be able to branch that out to many, many schools in the area. But, we're fortunate enough to meet with New Hanover High School and Snipes Academy, two great principals, and they're willing to put forth the effort along with their coaching, with the coach at New Hanover and with a great reading specialist at Snipes The kickoff, we hope, we plan on starting by September the 5th, and it will run the entire year. Student athletes will actually come over once a week during the school year, and they will meet with those students 30 to 45 minutes. We're going to work on vocabulary development, reading comprehension, and effective reading During their time, the student, the elementary school students, and it's a free program, so they're going to receive backpacks, stickers, bookmarks, incentives that will keep them motivated to do their best. Last year, we gave away 7,000 brand-new books to students, and we're going to give 10 brand-new books to the students each time. So they'll get 10 brand-new books that they'll be able to keep for themselves, develop their own library, and they can pass those on to other siblings. The basketball program at New Hanover County will invite them to an opportunity, to a game where they can feel that praise and understand that they are number one. We have big medals, like Olympic-sized medals, that they will be presented with because they've been working hard to be the best reader they possibly could be. These students will be identified, and I just finished talking, but will be identified by the staff of the elementary school. Student athletes are going to be trained by either me or the designee of the school, which is normally a reading specialist. Ms. Manning has already told me that there's a buzz in the air at their school already, that they've found students already that are ready to start the program. Just want to show you a little graph that we've done. In 2015, on-grade level, and this is students from the northern Virginia area, 39% were on-grade level at the beginning of fall, and at the students that were at-risk were 61% in the fall. And then at the end, our impact was 60% were on-grade level and at-risk students were 40%. A great growth. We're not saying that Readers Are Leaders does all of that, but with the encouragement of Readers Are Leaders parents, teachers, people that work with these students, we can build them up. We can really build them up. This actually shows you the schools and the number of students that we have participated with, and 29 sports teams in 23 high schools last year. In spring, these are all the names of the schools, and some of you, if you're ever from the Washington DC area, would know some of these schools. But next year, we will have two new schools added to this list with our pilot program. The impact, students will receive books, and each year, we have grown. Last year, we went down a little bit because we had a change in bell schedules, so we had to take some schools away, which was a little disheartening, but you know how bell schedules go and how to figure that out, so I stayed away from that. Our impact is providing books and supplies to the students, and owning their own books is just critical. You know, we don't have that. A lot of students don't have the iPads and things like that. They don't turn paper enough. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to do that. This for the student athletes, would teach them responsibility and personal contact, character results, or being patient and learning how to be a mentor, finding success and becoming a better reader. These students, as soon as they see each other, they gravitate, they come together, and they're able to work hand-in-hand with each other. I have many, many testimonials about how Readers Are Leaders has been. I've had some principals tell me it's been a lifesaver in their school because they had some students that need that additional encouragement, not from just their parents, not from just their teachers, but they need it from a student athlete that can give them a little boost to encourage them and dangle that carrot over them just a little bit to encourage them to be the best that they possibly can be. So, Readers Are Leaders is very exciting, and I really want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to come and be a part of your family, because I am here to stay. I'm not going anyplace now. But, I really appreciate you letting me be a part of the New Hanover County school system. And if there's anything that I can do to help you, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for bringing this program, and thank you, David, for your involvement in bringing this. I have been to several national school board associations where they talk about the fact of the importance of getting books into students' hands and all, and so I just want to congratulate, excuse me, congratulate you and tell you that we are here to make sure that you have what you need to make this a success. So, thanks to all of y'all.
Thank you very much. One question. How many, what's the goal for the number of children in New Hanover County that you want to engage in this? What is my goal?
Yes, sir.
Well, my goals are set high, so I would like to have every student that is an at-risk student in New Hanover County to be a part of it. Be realistic, I think that would be pretty difficult to obtain. We have a process that we need to go through to select schools, so if a school is interested, they have to go through the process of finding out if the student ath, if the coach is, the coach has to really give up of time to be able to do this and to work with their students, because the coach has to be there. The coach has to facilitate the activity along with the reading specialists. We're very fortunate that Ms. Manning and her brother actually coaches at New Hanover, and you know, she's going to take care of business with her brother, with her sibling.
I'm the elder sister.
She's the older sister. But, we found a great match. So, finding a great match of the elementary school and the high school, if we can find that, we can be very successful. We normally take between 10 to 15 students to work with, and that's normally been a great ratio. But really, I would really like to get as many schools affiliated with Readers Are Leaders in this area as possible. Yes?
First of all, I'd like to thank Rob and Rachel for doing this. I know that we met the first time. It's a lot of work logistically getting them together, so I certainly appreciate that. But, we've been talking about the basketball program at New Hanover. This program also covers other programs, not necessarily sports, correct?
Correct.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, I can. My first benefactor was a basketball junkie. It's the best way to put it. He loved basketball. It's all he wanted to do was have basketball players affiliated with him. And I explained to him that there's more student athletes than basketball players. So, the program is designed for student athletes. It may be a cheer group, it could be soccer, it could be basketball, football, baseball, soccer, anything like that. I've also had the program move to National Honor Society students as well. They have been very supportive to us. So, yes, it can be any sport group within your school, and at times, we do use National Honor Society or other organizations to help support Readers Are Leaders. Thanks for the question. Any other questions?
To be fair to our coach, I talked to him about this before he knew it. He was on board before he knew it to be working with her. We are very excited, and I think he's excited as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all, and thank you, David, for doing this.
I wonder if Dr. Morgan or Manning, Mrs. Manning, would like to say something at the microphone about your involvement or what your expectations are?
I'm just, I'm really excited about this program because, you know, you've all heard of our dribbling team that we have at Snipes Academy, and we have lots of different performance groups. But we also have quite a few kids that don't fit in any of those niches, and that's the kids we're looking at to identify. Right now, looking at 10 different male students that may kind of fly underneath our radar. They're not the ones that you see all the time. So I'm very excited about this opportunity because it's just one more thing that we can provide the students at Snipes Academy. And I'm very appreciative to Dr. Morgan because, you know, a high school schedule and an elementary schedule are two very different beasts. And he has been very gracious and very willing to work with us, and the boys from his school will be coming into our school about 7:30, 7:35 in the morning, and high school kids don't go to school that early. So, that's going to be a challenge, but I know they're up to it, and they've done a great job identifying the students that are going to be helping our kids. One other piece about it, I think, is very, very interesting, is my kids already look up to these kids. They see them as role models on the courts, but they also see them in the streets and they see them at home. And I think this is just another opportunity for my kids really to aspire, to continue to grow and continue to do well in school and to graduate and keep moving forward. So, I'm very excited about this opportunity.
The only thing I'll add is, one of the things about Mr. Byrd's program, I think, is it originally is established is, the students tend to meet with the students they're mentoring, the athletes tend to meet with them during their athletic season. One of the things that we've talked about is, a lot of our students, starting at Snipes and coming up through Virgo, Williston, New Hanover, they're accustomed to seeing people show up, hang out for a little bit, and then take off. And that's one of the things we really, we are really excited because we're trying to set up so it will go all year, as Mr. Byrd said, because we do feel like those students need to see that consistency with the athletes that they already look up to, as Ms. Manning said. So, I think, I'm excited that Mr. Byrd's willing to sort of alter his program, which has already proven to be successful, to sort of fit the needs of our schools in a way that we think will benefit all the kids. So, I think it's going to be a win-win, and we're excited about it. And I think, in addition to the reading impacts that we expect to see, you know, I think there's a lot of citizenship that I think these students will gain from it, both the high school students and the younger students, because they often get the chance to work with younger students unless they're told, "Watch your brother, watch your sister," you know, or they just find themselves watching the neighborhood kid. So, I think it's going to be a really good, really good opportunity for both sets of students to kind of see how we work together.
I have a question. Are any of the students able to attend at least one game in order to buy in more?
Our hope is that we'll get all of the students who are involved to at least one game together. There's probably a pretty good chance we could do it more than once. I don't think that'll be a problem. But I do think, to your point, we talked about that specifically, Mr. Byrd asked, that was sort of a big piece of the buy-in for the younger students.
Thank you.
And they will, just to interject, they will also, at that particular time, game that they go to, they'll be presented a certificate and a medal for their participation in it to just make them feel that much better. It's just a rewarding opportunity. It doesn't take a lot of time. It doesn't take a lot of time out of the game or anything, but it's a time for them to be recognized so that they can understand how important reading is.
And he may get Grant Hill to come and announce.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the call to the audience. I would remind you, each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limit discussion on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. Having said that, I've had one person sign up, Harper Peterson. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Long time no see.
Seeing a lot of old friends here. I hope I can say that with confidence.
I almost didn't recognize you sitting over there.
Thank you, Harper.
I'll be brief, and I'm not here to lecture and just to talk about GenX, and I know many, you're all familiar with that, as is everyone in the audience. Thank you, K-Fire. I would invite you to look at our website. It's meant to be hopefully an educational piece, diving into our water quality, how we protect it and preserve it, and also how we address regulations and how we improve those, so we don't have this concern, this issue, this crisis. I think it's important, as a school board, caring for our children. I am a resident, and I have five grown children, but they all came through the public system here in New Hanover County. I think it's important that we, a community, try to reach out and educate everyone regarding this issue. I don't think we can hide it. I think every, the world knows about it, the state, the country. But, a lot of people are confused, and in the eight weeks since this story broke, I think it's important that they understand the basic facts regarding contaminants in our drinking water and how we resolve this problem moving ahead as a community. I've tried to work with the K-Fire Public Utility, and we are presently, or I should say they are, with our support, putting together a white paper, so to speak, to disseminate throughout the community to their 250 users, there are over 66,000 clients or, excuse me, accounts, just to explain the basics and what they can do if they do not feel safe with the tap water, the drinking water. And I think people have a right in this community to, number one, have safe drinking water, and two, if they feel it's not safe, for whatever good reason, or whether it's misinformation, have the right to have an alternative source provided to them. You're probably aware of the fact that the utility company is working with the mayor and the city in providing points in the community where citizens can come and have water from our northern aquifer in Ogen Park. They can come and fill their receptacles there. Also, there are three churches in the downtown area that are also providing that service, and I think that's a healthy start. I charge you, the school board, with school fast approaching, to send out information letting parents know, understanding that children are very susceptible to contaminants in any form. They are a very vulnerable population in our community. Let them know that you are aware of the issues, they may have concerns, and you are addressing their concerns by, one, providing information, good information, factual information, and two, providing alternative sources for water. I think you would have a... I think you would have a very positive partner in the utility company, as well as the county and the city. We're all aware of it, we're all hoping this thing clears up soon, probably won't, but we're together, I think, united in the fact that we want to make this problem go away. So, please do your part as school board, you, these are your children, as well as the parents, and it's our responsibility as a community to make sure they not only have a good education, but a healthy environment to form, perform, and grow in. So, that's basically it.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for everything you do. I just spoke to Mr. Shell, I asked him if he's spending as much time as he did as county manager, and he said, "Not as much." I doubt that, I don't see how you could not spend time. It's a great passion, I know you have it, as all the members on this board do. So, thank you for your service.
Harper, when will the white paper be released?
I use that term "white paper," Bruce, and I, I think Jim Fleckner, the executive director, he has a draft, he's also translating it into Spanish. It's going to go out, my last correspondence with him was he was going to send out a special mailing to every account, and which will reach the over 250,000 users. Sometime, it's imminent, it could be this week or next week, but it's been eight weeks, so sooner the better.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, administrative personnel?
None.
All right. Then, next item, Head Start Report, Mr. Shell.
What we have on the screen, hopefully in a minute, will be our expenditure report. And for those of you that can't, can't see at all, it is for the second month, because we're a, April 30 year in for the purposes of this grant, and things are well in, in line for the year. We can go through the details, but I will tell you that spending versus availability is in real good shape. And we also have opportunity to hear from the experts. They're going to talk to us about their self-assessment improvement plan. I encourage you to listen to that, I think that's very important with what we're doing with these, these special children, three and four-year-olds. So, I'll turn it over to them. Come on up, Rachel and Shannon.
Good evening. Thank you so much. To Ms. Sasan? I'm going to start with a self-assessment improvement plan for 1718. And this data was consolidated by using multiple tools. We surveyed our parents, our classroom staff, we used the Title I survey as well. And this survey was conducted in April and May at the end of last school year. So, the outcomes of this data is our self-assessment improvement plan that is required by Head Start to have your governing board vote on this. So, our first goal is to, of course, increase our parent participation. It demonstrates the action steps that we're going to take, and the necessary tools and folks responsible in a timeframe. So, we do know that with our festivals and what we do at the school level, it's, actually, participation is awesome. But what we do know is we need to increase the participation with our policy council board, which is shared decision-makers, such as our governing board of education. So, we do know that we need to increase that membership, and these are the actions that we're going to do to help out with that. So, then we go on to our next goal. We did a great job with rolling out our school readiness plan. We did a great job with parts of our family goals. What we learned from the data on our surveys was that we need to do better. Okay, our parent, family, and community engagement framework is our Head Start framework, what they use, embedded in our school readiness goals, which you're going to see in our outcomes with our learning domains. We need to increase that participation, we need to get, not get, we need to equip our teachers to do a better job with documenting, monitoring, all of our family goals. Needs assessments, base those on those, and make sure that we follow up with those needs assessment and what our families are really needing. We do great at the beginning of the year, we need to make sure we follow through for the rest of the year. So, some action steps with those as well. And I do apologize, the Excel spreadsheet read the increased parent participation as a header, so that's my error, so I do apologize. So, then our next is commonly owned plan. When we sent out our surveys to our instructional team, and our education team, and our school team, we learned that we need to do a better job with finding some commonalities and working better together, and seeing the needs of our School of Johnson, and how our support team can help with those needs. Direct reflection of our data. We get to our teaching strategies goal, which Ms. Greer's going to show you what that tool is going to be able to do for us. There's many features for that. This is something that we agreed on as a district and knew that it was important for three-year-olds' learning, to purchase the portfolios, the TS Gold's online assessment. And this is why, it's in perfect alignment with our kindergarten, it measures our learning domains, it is the driver range to our standard store, standard course of studies, which is our foundations for early learning. So, we do know that that's important. Well, we're going to increase our knowledge on that. We're on year three, we're doing well, but we're just going to get better. So, these are those steps that we're going to take to make that better, and you're going to see the child outcomes report and see what we're able to do with that data. So, we get into some other important things. How do we get our babies to school? Transportation is very critical in getting our children to school, which will help with our tardies. So, what we would like to do is mirror what we do with our NC pre-K children. What we do know, again, we are short drivers. So, again, it was a reflection of our survey from our parents, so we're, we're going to put it in our plan and work on those actions the best that we can. Reduce the number of school tardies, that's a huge component for kindergarten readiness. We want to get better with that. Ms. Greer's already started with her meet and greets of this, this, this past school year, and being present and doing a great job with that, and mirroring that for her staff. We're going to take any further actions. We're going to try to get our policy council leaders to help with that, and get our staff on board with that, because it is so critical for our children to be to school on time for many reasons. We do roll call, we take lunch count, we want them to be included in, you know, our breakfast and lunch count, that's important to our children that attend our school at Johnson. So, those are the steps that we're going to talk, we're going to get our social workers on board, and we're going to just tighten that up. Yes, Mr. Shell?
I have a question. So, other than the survey at the end of the year, which will measure how you've improved in the eyes of the parents taking the survey, are there, is there other criteria that you use, like you're talking about increased parent participation? Is there a measuring tool there as well?
Well, what we did is, we looked at the participation in our signup sheets for policy council, and we had some live conversations during our policy council meetings in the end of May. But the other doodle, or, there was a Google survey that went out to staff, parents were contacted as well, and we went off of the Title I survey. In addition to that, we did open it up to community partnerships, so some Smart Start folks came, some other volunteers did the survey as well, and was measuring the welcoming of our environment and other tools such as that. But we can get better with that. And there are some follow-up pieces that will be embedded in Ms. Greer's school improvement plan, so we're going to just tighten up the monitoring of that to see how we can improve as we move along. As you know, our children move on to elementary schools, so our population changes, our parents change. So, it makes it very challenging to keep up with us, because when they're three and four, they move on to the larger schools, so we have a new batch of parents coming in every other year. Are there any other questions? If not, it gives me great pleasure to have Ms. Greer talk about our outcomes, which is formulated from our teaching strategies goal system, so.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here today to report to you our outcomes for the 2016-17 school year. We will navigate through student data associated with six domains of development and learning, including social, emotional, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, and mathematics. Initially, you will see how all students progress and the objectives. The information is then further disaggregated by age and gender. Following these slides are comparative bar graphs indicating how we compared to national widely-held expectations by age level. At the conclusion of the brief presentation, an analysis of growth summaries and implications of the data will be offered. Social-emotional proficiency. In these color-coded tables organized by age and gender, the percentage of students meeting age-level expectations is noted in green, blue, and pink. The percentages in the yellow represent the percent of students who have not yet reached age-level expectations for these particular objectives by the conclusion of the spring checkpoint window. As you can see in the initial green columns representing all students enrolled, most of our students met social and emotional expectations, with 90% or more reaching each objective. As you scan to the other columns, you can see that our girls had a slightly higher success rate than our boys, our four-year-old boys had a slightly higher success rate than our three-year-old boys, but our three-year-old girls had the highest average. These colors will be repeated for each bar graph in the presentation. The black bar at the top shows the top of the range of widely-held expectations based on national, national data from teaching strategies gold. The blue represents the bottom of the widely-held expectations. So, as long as that red bar representing our students is between the black and blue bars, the students are demonstrating success in meeting age-level expectations as compared to their peers. In regards to social and emotional proficiency, our students are much closer to the top of the widely-held expectations range, showing the success of conscious discipline, creative curriculum, second step, and amazing educators. Likewise, our four-year-old students fell within the upper ranges of the widely-held expectations. Onto physical proficiency. The objectives supporting the development of fine and gross motor skills were met by most of our students as well. Note the presence of 100% in several places, showing that each student represented by the corresponding age and gender met and exceeded the age-level expectations. In comparison to their peers across the nation, our three-year-old students were in the upper range of the widely-held expectations of the physical proficiency. And our average four-year-old skill score represented by the red bar is nestled in between the top and bottom of the widely-held expectations. Language proficiency. Regarding the development of language, our overall percentages are strong. Our three-year-old girls met or exceeded every language objective. While 94% or more of our four-year-old boys demonstrated proficiency in language, there is notable difference for three-year-old boys, with the percentages of students meeting or exceeding age-level expectations ranging between 83% and 87%. In the next two graphs, you will see how our three- and four-year-olds' scale scores compared to the national expectations for language and development. Cognitive proficiency. Overall, the objectives supporting the cognitive development were met or exceeded by almost all of our students. Cognitive comparisons are shown for our three-year-olds on this slide, and four-year-old data is included in the next. In regards to literacy proficiency, as we jump into academic skills, that you will also see measured in kindergarten, we begin to see discrepancy between three-year-old and four-year-old progress. While our four-year-olds demonstrated higher rates of success in meeting age-level expectations of literacy development, our three-year-olds are still working towards their expectations of knowledge of the alphabet, phonological awareness, and the beginning stages of reading books. While we just reviewed our three-year-old data, showing lower percentages of proficiency than our four-year-olds in literacy, you can still celebrate their success in comparison to their three-year-old peers in the acquisition, acquisition of literacy skills. Our four-year-olds also fared well in comparison to other four-year-olds in the nation. In mathematics proficiency, the objectives noted for mathematics are also quite similar to those measured in kindergarten classrooms. Supporting the understanding of number concepts and operation, in addition to spatial relationships and shapes, are areas we will target for growth in the years to come. Our final slides comparing students to widely-held expectations regard students' progress in math. As in all the other comparative bar graphs, our students' average scale scores fall well within the national population of three- and four-year-olds, who are also measured on these assessments. Another way to analyze student outcomes is in the area of student growth. The fourth column identifies the percentage of students who were below the growth range in each domain between the fall and spring checkpoints. The final column includes a percentage of students enrolled who are meeting or exceeding the growth range. It's interesting to see the differences in the range of growth by area of development for three-year-olds as compared to the four-year-olds on the following slide. So, big ideas walk away with conclusions. Our accomplishments, our averages from both three- and four-year-olds fell within national widely-held expectations. 90% or more of our three-year-olds met or exceeded growth in physical, language, and literacy domains. 90% or more of our four-year-olds met or exceeded growth in physical and literacy domains. Target objectives for improvement, always looking to grow, right along with our students. Demonstrating knowledge of the alphabet, using number concepts and operations, exploring and describing spatial relationships and shapes. In response to the data, we're going to target some more professional development for data disaggregation and small group instruction. We are going to learn more about multiple-tiered systems of support at the pre-K level, and the first goals of our school improvement plan, the first and second, will be hit hard. Those are about improving age-level proficiency in literacy and math. That's the conclusion of our outcomes report.
Mr. Chairperson, I did forget, we need to make an action vote on our self-assessment improvement plan for 1718, so we do need an action on that item.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion that we approve the action plan?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is adopted.
I have one last question. When, when this is year three, the results of year three, right? So, when you compare it to what we've done in the past, how does it compare, or did we do this assessment in years past?
Last year, we did do an outcomes report, however, it looked a little bit different when we aggregated the data. And that's very challenging, because again, you have a whole new set of students as well. So, again, the longevity of this is, you know, getting more in-depth with the data, learning how to aggregate the data, learning how to use our assessments and our checkpoints better, will do nothing but improve. So, based on our professional development, we'll work on those pieces.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, and thank y'all for the work.
Thank you very much for your continued support.
All right. Next item on our agenda is information, facility use update, Appendix G, Ms. Quarterbottom.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have submitted the facility use report for 2016 and 2017, based on Board Policy 4500. And just a few highlights of the report. And just a few highlights of the report. The district, one hundred and twenty-eight outside organizations used our facilities, and forty of those organizations used them at no cost. There were over seven thousand community use hours, and an estimated thirty-five thousand individuals attended events held by outside organizations at our facilities. And finally, almost one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars was collected in facility rental and community use revenues. So I submit this report for your information.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you remind us as to what are the, what determines whether someone is charged or not charged?
Okay. We have certain organizations that the board identified that we wouldn't charge, certain board organizations.
So if they're on that list or not on that list, that's the, that's the sole determinant as to whether or not they're charged?
Yes, ma'am. Everyone else is charged.
Thank you.
Primarily related to if it's directly serving our students. For example, a youth soccer league has our students playing soccer. So I believe when Dr. Hickey was here is when we made that change. So most of the ones who are paying are paying are folks who don't, are typically student organizations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the monies that you reported are not necessarily a gain for us, because that goes to, for the extra help that we have to provide that evening, or for supplies?
Yes, ma'am. The money is used for the custodians and other costs associated.
Utilities and the expense of opening the building or facility.
But the organization would pay those. I mean, they would not be charged, but they would pay the expenses associated with it.
They pay us, so it gets booked technically as revenue.
Right.
But it's not really, we're not.
Right, but they pay the expenses associated.
Correct, well, they don't pay expenses, so.
No.
They don't, they don't pay directly to the custodian. They pay us, and we pay the custodian.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but they're paid.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're paid, but they're, they're not paying directly. They're paying, they're renting from us, and then we are paying all the expenses.
We're not in the, it's not a, it's not a money-making.
No, it's not a profit-making.
We do wanna try to cover our costs.
Right. But thirty-five thousand outside uses, people using facilities is, these are public facilities, there are tax dollars that help build them, so I think it's a.
It's good community relations.
Good.
Yes.
Well, for example, the Wilson Center, we don't pay to use that, do we? When we had our graduation.
Now, the Community College has been a great partner with us in terms of facility use.
Do they have to do that?
No. Yeah, I think as part of the original piece there, there is a community outreach aspect to the Wilson Center.
I mean, it's, it's great they do, I just wish they'd talked to UNCW.
We've had that discussion.
About Tras Coliseum.
Yeah, that's a.
That's a whole different.
At least give us a better discount.
Yeah. He kinda thought that was kinda funny.
Oh, I've been egging him about that for a while.
Who's that? We had a meeting the other day about the.
UNCW.
UNCW.
Or the, that school, the laptop?
Yeah, and that, that, the Tras came up as part of that, and he, Castro seemed to think this is kinda funny.
Well, he knows I'm gonna get it back somewhere.
He thinks it's funny that we have to pay?
Yes, he kinda was chuckling at it.
It's a.
I'm glad he thinks it's funny.
It's not funny to him, but it is a sort of a long-running discussion with he and I.
Yeah. Anyway. Isn't it, don't we charge, do we charge anything for graduation fees?
To?
To students.
No. They buy their captain gown.
They buy a captain gown, but there's no graduation fee per se.
No. Not something I'm ready to step into stepping about.
I was just asking. I wouldn't, I wouldn't hope I have a discussion, I was just asking.
Graduation tax?
Tickets.
All right. This is a Republican board, I thought.
Well, that's, that's the way they raise money. We, we, we reduce income tax, and then we charge for everything else.
All right. Next item on the consensus, this consensus side, personnel, Appendix H, Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Recommend the board approve the personnel policies as presented.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Just one. Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Wilmers, the, this is kind of the routine thing that you do to show people that are being hired and people that are leaving, right? So would you, would you report to us, when, I guess, when do you report turnover by school? And it could be interesting to see that.
We just have gotten that report, that the, that ends on the July one day, and we generate that report because the state requested it too. The state actually takes that information and gives us back the percentages, because we have to check to make sure all the kids are accounted for as we can. So we, we should have that full report literally in the next couple of weeks, if not already.
So you'll send that to us?
Yes, sir, sure. And I do a comparison in the past, remember, I put each in year, side by side.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, we've, we've gotten that annually, so.
All right. All those in favor of approving the, do I have, yes, I've had a motion.
Yes.
All those in favor of approving the personnel report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Change of school assignments, Dr. Hawley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I request that you release these students to neighboring counties, and Porzanslo is not a neighboring county, but it's close by. These are either students who are, parents are employed by those districts, or are in some way dealing with DSS in those counties that have what we call transition homes or foster homes or that, that nature.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Old business. Two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, revised Freeman Year-Round Pre-K Calendar, Appendix J, Dr. Smith.
Yes, I would ask the board's approval for the revised Freeman Year-Round Pre-K Calendar. We are required to develop a calendar with two hundred and fifteen days of employment for teachers. Unfortunately, we made an error in the last calendar, we only had two hundred and fourteen days for teaching. So we have added an additional, undesignedated workday to the end of the calendar year.
Does not impact student days.
It does not.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. New business. North Carolina Educational Lottery Application, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now that the board has approved their, the capital budget, we're asking that those capital projects that are to be funded through the North Carolina Education Lottery, those project applications be approved. If they're approved here tonight, we'll carry them forward to the county commissioners at their meeting on the twenty-first.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion?
Are all the items in here, Mr. Anderson, included in our budget that matches against our budget?
Well, these are those projects, these are those capital projects that were, are funded through the lottery. What you approved last month are the locally-funded capital projects as part of the budget resolution.
During our budget discussions, we approved these, we, we discussed these particular projects that would be brought forth for consideration. So they're the same ones we discussed during the budget process, but they weren't in the budget resolution, because they have to go through these approval processes.
Right, so you'll bring this back for the budget amendment?
It's September, assuming it gets approved by the county commissioner.
Thank you.
So these were the top-of-the-list items that we needed to do?
Yeah, just because, different funding sources have different rules. So you approve the local ones as part of the budget, lottery has its own process for approval.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Disposal of surplus property as being unnecessary to the operation of schools. Mr., Ms. Small, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I request the board's approval of this list of items for consideration for surplus. Once approved by the board, they're scheduled to be auctioned on August the nineteenth at ten o'clock.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. As I said it, Mr. Bullock, do I, does she need to say that officially in the statement, or?
No, I think you were close enough.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Cooperative Innovative High School Application, Appendix M, Dr. Smith.
Would request the board's approval for Southeast Area Technical High School to make application for the Cooperative Innovative High School grant. If selected, this would provide us greater flexibility to meet the needs of our students by providing them greater access to the community college courses, and allow them also access as fifth-year high school students to those courses as well, along with calendar flexibility. And I do, we do have with us Dr. Evie Skipper, if we have any specific questions about the application.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, my question is, how do we benefit when we're making this application? We expect to be approved, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, so assuming, I know you've had discussions with the state before you got there, so you're, it's very hopeful we've got hand in glove here. So my question would be, what, if by getting this, what does this enable CTAC do that if we don't get it? What's the comparison?
It will open up opportunities for more class offerings through the community college without it. It kind of binds us to all of those offerings that are through the college and career promise.
So it's an opportunity for us to be different and offer courses that were more in line with what we're trying to accomplish?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is it, is it a monetary grant?
No. Unfortunately, there's no money attached to this grant, but it does, we need this one for the flexibility.
Mr. Bryant, would you like to add?
There is a possibility for funding, but we, we're not optimistic in terms of whether or not we would receive it, but when we do apply, we do apply for funding. The funding is not contingent upon whether or not we can move forward or not with the, the process. So you can either be funded, you can either have approval to move forward with funding, or approval to move forward without funding. We suspect, like Dr. Markley said, that we will probably be moving forward without funding, but we're gonna ask for it either way.
What's an example of a course that you'll be able to offer with this enablement that we cannot do now?
I think in your packet, there are seven different curriculum maps that have been offered. As an example, we will offer those same curriculum maps to the state as well. We also have a follow-up with North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to have them look over our application before final submission, just for any tweaking that we may need to do prior to our final submission, but we feel pretty good about where we are with the application process at this point.
I know early on, we talked about with the innovative, at least I believe this is right, that we'd have blended classes, and we'd have flexibility, so that if, as, as I recall, the community college does a survey, determines where jobs are going to be, so we're trying to train young people so that they can fit those jobs and be successful. So I guess seeing that assessment and going backwards will put you in a position to be flexible to meet those needs. Is that, is, am I overstating what we're doing here?
No, that's exactly the way we have identified those classes. We also surveyed the children as to what they were most interested in, so we've got those top three, so we will help them see lots of different opportunities and expose them to all of that, so that they can narrow their thinking down before they get too far into the program.
What were the top four?
I believe it was health sciences, hospitality, and tourism, and public safety.
I think so.
I think that, I think I hit that right. It might have been, there might have been a residential and commercial construction as well in there.
Okay, good, thank you.
So this is a way to kind of separate the vocational or the innovative high school from the traditional high schools, so they can have a different curriculum at this high school than what there would be at Ashley, Auger, and River.
Yes, CCP is offered in the traditional settings, and this would open the door to all of the offerings that kick there.
The grant also allows us to, for our students to access the courses sooner rather than later. At the traditional high schools, they can only access in the eleventh and twelfth grade, whereas this grant, or this application, if awarded, gives us the opportunity for our students to access earlier than that.
How much earlier do you think that?
Yes, probably second semester of tenth grade.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment, I think this is an awesome thing that we're doing with this, what my age group calls a vocational, but a career technical education high school. I just think it's awesome that we're offering that. Everywhere I go, people talk about how that is positive, and just will serve to make more opportunities for children, so I applaud you for your.
Thank you.
And I just keep hearing about all the awesome people involved with that school.
Yes.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item. Memorandum of Understanding for the Marine Science Program, Science Academy with UNCW at Eugene-Ashley High School, Appendix N, Dr. Smith.
Yes, would ask for the board's approval for the renewal of the, this memorandum. This supports the collaborative work that UNCW does with Ashley High School. It also provides the articulation that allows for their university folks to work with our students. This also includes course waivers for UNCW upon successful completion of the Marine Science Academy program.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, dash three eighteen, point eleven, eight one six, and one fifteen C, three nineteen, three twenty-one, and four oh two. Do I hear a motion? We go into closed session?
I move, a second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Let the folks who are sitting here anticipate no action coming out of closed session, so that'll really be, this is the end of our regular business agenda.
We will come back to.
Announcements.
For announcements and the close output anyway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session, we'll go back in one oh four.